wider angle.
Long time no see.
Jim, we've got you up here.
Okay, we're, we're, okay.
If you'd like.
I'm invited. Wow, I'll join you.
Okay, we are live on YouTube and I'm ready to start recording.
Gotta be a studying and zoom somehow to not have that.
Maybe get yourself like a wireless mouse.
Get my stuff then. Okay, I believe we're ready, Mary Jones.
I think he's trying to figure out his audio.
Chris, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Yes, well, he left.
Is the audio clear?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yes.
So it looks like we are live and ready to go.
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, we can't hear you. I think the audio is being cut out by the mic in the in City Hall.
Thank you. Chris, can you hear me now? Yeah, I heard you back. I think it has something to do with some stuff being moved around on the desk. So let's try this again. Does sound okay, Jessica? Okay, thank you. Bring that up again if it happens again, please. Thank you. Hi, Matt. Thanks for joining. So thanks for joining us tonight for June 13th work session. Chris, tonight's work session is on the downtown Flemish revitalization plan developed with in collaboration with Stan Tech. Did you want to go ahead and get us started? Oh, and I wanted to acknowledge Council, County Commissioner Wise. Hi, County Commissioner. Good to see you. Thanks for joining us. And Chris, do you want to get us started?
Well, yeah. Thanks, everybody. So we have this time coming back and there's some nice recommendations in here. It seems to be very timely, which was the whole intent with.
Excuse me, Chris, you want to do a roll call first?
We do roll call. Guys, you want to do a roll call, Mayor Jones?
Distracted by my tech issues, but yeah, let's go ahead and get started with the roll call.
Jessica Androtic.
Present.
Catherine Bisco.
Here.
Ruth Posse.
Here.
Matt Lehman.
Here.
David Lo.
Here.
Teresa Nielsen.
Here.
Chaz Jones.
Here.
Excellent. And Chris, go ahead and you can go ahead and get us started with that work session.
Okay. So the timing on this was great to have Stan Tech do this work again. Just quickly, this was paid, this effort was paid for through the grant, the Brownfield Coalition comprising the Albany, Corvallis, Benton County, City of Flemish, and City of Monroe, put together for, this is a $600,000 grant, which was used for Phase One, Phase Two environmental assessments on both public and privately owned property within those jurisdictions, as well as some of these, I think this was the only area wide plan that was done, but then we also looked at reuse plans, which landmark drive or landmark, the north property up in the north and the landmark received. I believe also in Flemish, the property that Northernwood, which is Alarica and the other Sullivan family owned property or businesses developed that had, I think, a Phase One and a Phase Two done with those funds. So for the size of Flemish, look, we're definitely got our money's worth out of the $600,000 grant that we applied for, number of properties inside the city that were able to make use of that, including this project. This is probably the biggest one the city did. I think this was about a $35,000 project that got paid up to the consultant for the work here, multiple meetings, survey, and then this report that we're going to go through tonight. Tonight, the, my hope is we can kind of go through, I'll go to the executive summary just to give a little background, and then get into the document some. What I'm hoping is to just have an open discussion with the council. If there's specific projects that you feel passionate about and feel like they're way that we should head forward, then we just need some direction for staff to start moving that way. Some of these things are already in line with the strategic plan. Some of them, maybe some direction could be given to staff to add things in draft form onto the strategic plan. We want to start heading this direction. Other things may be, you know, the strategic plan is completely silent on it. It's kind of a new idea, new concept. And I just, again, need some direction if we want to have that road or head down that road, or if it's something we put off for future years or future generations even. So that's what I'm trying to get from you tonight is just to feel on which of these ideas and concepts you like as a council and which ones you're not as interested in pursuing. So with that, we'll jump right into it. I'm not going to read a whole lot because the council has all given us a couple of weeks ago and hopefully had time to go through this a little bit on your own. But on page two, just to get around the same page, second paragraph, it says, "The community's vision is to transform downtown Flemish into a captivating, welcoming, and distinctive designation with an array of amenities, businesses, and community gathering spaces." So this is the vision that Stan Tech kind of incorporated based on the meetings that they had and the surveys that was done. And their input is this Flemish downtown area. Traditionally, Flemish downtown has been on the map and off the map, so to speak. For a number of years, we had a downtown association that worked on downtown centric things. They were the catalyst for the streetscape project and getting that project really initiated and and kind of getting the bone work and the legwork put together on that. So they were very active. They held activities. They held street festivals on 13th Street. I mean, there were a lot of different things that the downtown association did. Worked with businesses in the downtown area. They looked at different parking conceptual designs for parking in the backs of the buildings. So a lot of work kind of got done. Over time, that group's kind of dissolved and the chamber's really stepped up and has kind of dabbled in the downtown area, but really it's really focused on just overall chamber commerce type issues, not really focus in the downtown area per se. And so what this is doing is really shifting attention back to the downtown as a unique and distinct place in Flemish, different than City of Flemish. So when you talk about City of Flemish business and economic development, there's Flemish business and then there's going to be this downtown core, which is what this report really focuses in on. And so you're really looking, as is shown on page three and other maps in here, you're looking from, you know, 15th Street down to like 10th Street, so about a five block, mostly both sides of Main Street and on the north side of Applegate Street. In rough terms, right? That's the, at least the scoping area that they looked at in a lot of their analysis that they performed. That doesn't mean that that's like future C1. It doesn't mean that that's the downtown. It's just that's what they looked at when they were doing their analysis and looking at these different, lots of different areas. But that's what they're looking at as kind of Flemish downtown for purposes of this report. The paragraph, I'll read the first part of on page two is the last paragraph. And they state downtown is uniquely positioned along Highway 20, which is a major travel route between I-5 and the Oregon coast and passing through Corvallis to the east. Downtown's location creates tremendous opportunity to be the central gathering place for the Flemish community, but also a major commercial destination for travelers passing through the region. And I definitely heard that in the survey and the comments is that not only do we want to be a tourist stop for people, which is great, come stop, spend your money here. We also want to be a gathering spot and a central commercial district for Flemish residents, right? Flemish residents want a spot they can go on Friday night rather than having to go into Corvallis or go up to Albany or go up to Portland. We want to have things in downtown Flemish people go to on a Friday or Saturday night and hang out in downtown Flemish. So we definitely want there to be those amenities there, have the shopping there, those experiences. So going through, I'm looking at page five, if you will, this will go, I'm making too much. Brownfield considerations, talked about the grant program earlier, talked about this information there, airway plan components. They break this down into community conditions, property and inventory brownfield sites, community vision and priorities, the urban framework plan, revitalization strategies and action plan. So we'll hit on each of those as we, as we go through the document tonight, starting with the community priorities. Kind of setting the table here a little bit, community priorities, they've got four themes that they look at, supporting downtown vitality, creating a community gathering space. Theme C is connect destinations and businesses. And then theme D to create a distinctive place that you make. And there's skin information on each of those. So as they look at each of these projects, they try to categorize them to what is it, you know, which of these priorities does that, do each of these different events take place in? When you look at page six on the urban framework plan, in fact, I'm talking, I can try to pull this up as I talk here. The map has got a lot of detail in it and then below it, there's a table of all the different projects or the different plans, if you will. And so I won't decipher this too much because, you know, the rest of the document will talk about each of these in specifics. But this just gives you kind of an idea of the scope. The pink is essentially the area or that outside areas, that downtown area. Yellow is going to be what they consider catalyst sites or sites that the city could focus on for some type of Cadillac or Catholic. That's not right. For catalyst projects, so new projects that would spur additional development could be Cadillac, could be Jaguar, could be whatever, right? Our catalyst sites. And then there's, you know, some, I'm looking at like the the potential festival street on 13th Street is the red dotted line. There's a couple of pedestrian passenger gateways where they see it might be nice to rather than have all vehicle traffic, have some assigned pedestrian walkways where you could have some additional commerce and things take place in those alleyways that is difficult to do when you have to provide for vehicles going, going through them. So you know, they've got all these, but again, later in the documents we go through, we'll kind of touch on each of these, but this is kind of that first overall map to take a look at what's available. Community revitalization strategies on page eight. Strategy one was these town destinations and sort of land uses. I'm going to actually go through, so this is still executive summary and we're getting more detail here. So let's go through to chapter one before we get too bogged down in any of those kind of general overviews. I'm skipping through the first few pages because this is stuff we've already talked about. Part two team in the focus area, community planning assets we talked through quickly. Page 18 to 19 is the Bay Brownfield Assessment Program itself, just giving you some more background on the program. And so really, chapter two is when we start talking about community conditions and context. Goes through kind of where we're at now. Again, I'm going to have, go to some presumptions that the city council is pretty familiar with their current situation and where we're at, where we're located. All of that good stuff, some pictures of some, just current snapshots, Stan Tech did come out onsite, I think it was two different occasions, took some photos, looked at the site, specific areas. They didn't do this via Google, right? I mean, this, they actually came out and took a look at these spots, out of the car, walked around, tried to get a fill for these areas and these different sites that they made recommendations on. Again, another shot of the focus area on page 25. Some nice overhead shots with the focus area so you can kind of, you know, if you put ourselves 10 years out from now, it'd be kind of cool to be able to go back and look at these photos, look at these sites and what was that versus what's going to be 10 years from now, 20 years from now. So I'm going to page 28 is the next time I've got something highlighted to really start talking with the council about. So if you want to get to there, I'm looking at downtown challenges and considerations. So again, this is mostly for background. And these are kind of best practices, if you will, that are coming from Stan Tech and the work that they do. These are challenges that they saw in our downtown area and I just want to have them, I think, go over them quickly so they're in the back of our mind as we're going forward. Vacancies, gaps, and underutilization will kill your downtown, right? If you go downtown for a good time or get something to eat or go shopping and every other store is closed or vacant or there's nothing happening there, you're going to get back in the car and go someplace else, right? And so any of those vacancies that you've got, big gaps where you've got just, you know, storefront, storefront, nothingness, and then storefront half a block down. And I want to walk a half a block or a block down to see what else is there, or are we just going to turn around and start heading back the other way, right? Which is what most people end up doing because you don't want to walk a block through nothingness to get to something else. And so, and then underutilization is going to be storefronts and people are in there, but they're not open, right? So it's underutilized. For what? So those are, those are difficult suburban style developments is another one. Being very car centric will hurt your downtown area as well. So last one here, pedestrian oriented mixed use projects will strengthen downtown's intended character and increase the supply of commercial services. So we want to be mindful of that, kind of staying away from suburban style development, which is very car centric. And we really want to look at a pedestrian centric downtown, which means it may be less convenient for you to drive right to the shop you want to go to and go to get something, get out. That's very car centric, right? It may be that you go to the downtown, you find a a public parking space and you get out and you walk a half a block or a block to get to the place that you're going to go and you pass two or three or four shops on the way and you decide to stop in there as well and stop at your pharmacy and, you know, it's a downtown pedestrian scale design as opposed to being car centric. Houses and residential properties in your downtown. It kind of goes both ways. There can be some pluses because you're bringing people into downtown area that are going to be more likely to just be able to get out and walk and hit your downtown area. But it kind of reads a highlighted potential conflict in terms of building scale. You know, you got two story building, two story building, single family house, single level, right? And then kind of off through there. So it can be a break in the commercial activity that you want to see. And then you've got this, I guess the focus would be for adaptively reused historic homes for new community serving uses such as small scale offices, retail, accommodating accommodations on certain streets of all the shopping streets like 13th Street. So I think of like the little house on not the Prairie, little house on 13th and, or no, 19th and College. That was a residential home. It used to be, I think they sold carpet out of there at one time, but then it went back to residential use. It's never cut up that well and it was kind of a bad spot for residential anyway. I think they had hard to even get any good tenants in there because it's right on 19th and kind of busy and and that was purchased and converted over and now it's a great little office space there. They've got a nice little parking lot. They've got one tenant in there already, Helen Bennett's in there. They've got to sign up for lease for the rest of that building. That's a great transition from what wasn't, nice little house in a bad spot for a house. Now it's a great little office space with, it's got some pretty good traffic and some nice drive bys. They're going to see your signage and, you know, it's a nice little spot. So that's the type of repurposing redevelopment that you kind of look for in that downtown areas. How do you not necessarily tear down what's there, but how do you repurpose it, reutilize it for more of a commercial activity? And then the pedestrian and bicycle access talked on briefly. This is the not suburban self-development, right? So we want to have look at it. Some of the issues I highlighted, you got several of the side streets have gaps and sidewalk network, lack of streetscape amenities currently, more suburban style building patterns going on. And then there's down the bottom there, prospects to expand the city bicycle infrastructure throughout downtown, traditional bike lanes, racks, pavement markings to achieve much stronger multimodal destination. Some of that's going to be done with the streetscape project. There's still going to be some holes. There's still going to be some gaps, right? So streetscape products in the city of 13th Street, but we're not hitting 12th Street between Applegate, Maine. We're not hitting 11th Street or 10th Street. So none of those are getting done. The bike lane is going to have that cycle track, the two way cycle track on the south side of Applegate, which is awesome from 15th to 13th Street. But what does the bike route look like along Applegate east of 15th Street? Need some work. There's no, there's no dedicated bike lane, right? And so part of the theme for tonight's meeting is the streetscape project is going to do a lot of things, but it's not going to do all things. There's going to be additional projects that the city should consider doing. They're going to cost more money, but the, well, they're going to cost more money, but a good time to do them is going to be when a contractor is already here in town onsite doing other projects with asphalt, with paint striping, et cetera, et cetera. So it's probably a good time here in the next six months for the city to start considering other small projects, spinoff projects, we'll call them, to the streetscape project that can expand bicycle, pedestrian amenities that are going to expand commercial activity. They're going to expand wayfinding. They're going to expand downtown parking areas, right? So some of these things we'll talk through again as we go through this, but just be mindful that these spinoff projects, we don't have to do them now, but now may be the most affordable time for us to do them. But it is going to be more money, right? Because none of this is free. So it's a matter of how much are we wanting and able to spend for some of these spinoff projects. On the conference of plan downtown policies, this page just put a little bit asterisk here because the, the planning commission has undergone review of the economic chapter in the conference of plan. They've got several recommendations. It's essentially an overhaul at the existing policies. And so those will be coming to the city council here within the next couple of months. So again, just an asterisk on page 29. I think some of the new policies, like policy 12, 13, 14, those are slightly different now. And there's, I think, some very good new policies about tourism, about downtown revitalization, about having a downtown district, expanding the C1 zoning, those types of things which are incorporated. So just put a pin in page 29 and when we get, when we start looking at the new recommendations from the planning commission, I think that'll be a good time to revisit what policies the city council should consider. We'll look at zoning and development standards, similar to what I just talked about, the conference plan. Part of that look is going to be a pretty open discussion with the planning commission is, okay, we've looked at housing, we've looked at economics. We've looked at your downtown development ideas and strategies. Now let's look at our zoning map. Where should we focus and where should we look at? There's some pretty pretty black and white recommendations in this policy. There were some recommendations in the downtown. The downtown plan that was done. We even saw some recommendations coming out of Eco Northwest in our economic opportunities analysis and our housing needs analysis on some zoning change recommendations. So it's definitely a project we need to take on. Typically, that zoning map discussion takes place after you've updated your housing policies and your housing and your economic development policies. And that's the appropriate time to look at the maps. We're not quite there, but we're not far off from looking at the map and identifying some current zoning that could be tweaked and or changed. There's a legal process. It's a land use and legal process to go through to do that. There's community outreach. There's property owner outreach and all those things to be done. So it's a, it's a process. It's not a matter of just going on the map and circling it and changing it. People get a little upset when you start changing the allowed uses of their property that they own. And so that has to be done very thoughtfully and very carefully and with a lot of public input. So again, we'll spend a lot of time on that tonight, but it's a consideration. As a premise, I would say, as we've kind of talked about, the general recommendation here is look to expand that C1 zone. The C1 is for downtown commercial. It's geared to be more pedestrian friendly and it's, there's some exclusions we'd want to look at, like avoiding drive-throughs, drive up windows, those types of things. You want to kind of keep those out of that C1 because you want to be pedestrian friendly, not necessarily car friendly. Car friendly is great outside of your urban center, your downtown district. There's nothing wrong with the drive-through bank, but in your downtown friendly area where you want to discourage cars from driving all over the place, you maybe not want to have that drive-through anymore, right? So that'll be some of the considerations is what is the zoning and an expansion of downtown zone and what are the allowed uses within that zone, right? And do we look at things like drive-throughs and things and exclude them from that downtown district? That'll be a discussion I've talked through a lot already. I need to catch my breath. Are there any questions up to this point on any kind of the basics that we've done over? Again, I'm still kind of, got a lot in front of us, but any concerns or anything, jump out at anybody at this point, or anybody have any comments?
Matt, go ahead. Sorry.
No worries. So I'm having a little bit of a problem reconciling in my own mind, the concept of maintaining an effective freight corridor through the middle of a pedestrian and bicycle friendly downtown core. And I'm just hoping that someone can, can help me connect those two together and and convince me that those are two things that can happen at the same time.
I'm not going to try to convince you anything because it's difficult, but I can point you to examples where alone, right? I mean, the example we always look to is Sisters, that's the main freight route from the valley to eastern Oregon, all those through Sisters. They've got a great little downtown area. They've got a wraparound for the trucks to go through. We don't, right? And so typically those truck routes are put in by ODOT because they're trying to avoid those little central hubs, those heavy pedestrian areas. I don't know that ODOT has any of those plans with the improvements they've made to Highway 20. I don't see that happening. But I don't necessarily want to surrender our downtown to freight. And just say, well, there's a lot of trucks down there, so we're not going to make any downtown improvements. I am convinced that the streetscape project is going to slow traffic down. I don't necessarily want to say it will deter trucks from coming through town, but I think it will definitely help them behave better as they're going through town. They'll be forced to with the pinched intersections. And again, bringing more people to do that downtown is going to have those trucks slow down as well. So I think we can cohabitate the area, you know, the time of day when you've got most freight is during those working hours during the day. The time when you're really seeing most people habitating or going to the downtown areas is going to be in your late afternoons, evenings, weekends. And so, you know, you've kind of got a little bit of time in offset there. But I don't know, I yeah, I guess I would just say I don't think it's worth not making improvements to downtown because we've got more freight in downtown. I think we find a way to coexist.
Yeah, I will add that. I feel like the it behooves us to figure out ways so that freight and and smaller vehicles simply slow down through the downtown area. But if, if they're going to manageable speed, having pedestrians around isn't, isn't going to be a problem. But it's just that we have to get them to slow down, right? I think that's a problem, Matt.
Well, I think we're looking at it from, I think we need to look at it from two perspectives. So if you say, for example, go routinely down to Dirt Road Brewing and get on that table, that's on Say, for example, go routinely down to Dirt Road Brewing and get on that table that's on the main street side. And sit there for an hour, you realize that it's difficult to hold a conversation because as soon as you start to say something. Then an 18 wheeler comes and parks right next to you and spits diesel fumes in your face and it's just not pleasant. So you know, the safety issue is, is one thing, but. I'm, I'm not sure if we're in a, if you build it, they will come situation when we're going to have, you know, idling trucks outside of these public spaces that we're trying to create.
Thank you. Counselor.
I think also not just getting trucks to slow down, but I can, I mean, because this is. A major throughway for, for these commercial trucks. That you slow them down, we're just going to have a huge big traffic jam, which is going to make it more difficult to, to, for just residents to get around unless you go into. Other surface streets. To, I don't know, to me, has Stan, does Stan Tech address any of that? I mean, to me, this is a real important aspect of this whole consideration is. The fact that this is a major highway going through the middle of town and without what Sisters has. And no way of doing it. I mean, you can get these commercial trucks going off in chapel and coming down swinging through places. I. I don't know. I think I need to be convinced to like, uh, counselor leaving.
There's mention of highway 20 at the beginning, kind of when they start looking at where we're at. It's not identified as a. Major obstacle or it's not necessarily called out as a major obstacle where there's solutions on how to go about it. Again, I think it's a matter of. Let's use a poor analogy again. It's kind of dealing with the cards that you've been dealt. I mean, highway 20 runs through the middle downtown. Well, what do you, what are we going to do about it, right? I mean, again, I think a lot of these strategies are still around. Improving commerce, you know, getting people to downtown area, looking for areas off of the highway where people can gather. You know, I think a lot of these. If implemented are still going to improve and make a better, more viable downtown area. Is it going to be the same as if we didn't have any trucks in the downtown area? Well, no, that would be a different, you know, probably get into that next tier, but. I still think that implementing a lot of these strategies are going to get us a better, more viable downtown, and that's really what we're looking for. It's not the golden goose. It's, it's going to get us better than where we are.
Yeah, just looking at the urban framework plan on page six, just looking at how it's outlined. It appears that to me that those businesses that are to the north of Main Street. Are. Are maybe most difficult if. If somehow it's between Main Street and Apple Street, Applegate Street. Where you've got essentially two blocks. It, it, it seems that there's maybe more opportunity for pedestrian interface and whatever. There, maybe taking the focus from Main Street and north and south to, to South Main Street to the north of Applegate. It's just a thought. I'm not sure.
Yeah. Yeah, if we start looking at prioritization, this is kind of everything, right? But when we start prioritizing, there's definitely some things that are greater priority than, than others. And I agree with you. I think going. South of Main Street, south of Applegate, for sure, you get, you know.
Less to work with, really.
So, I agree.
And so I had, I'm thinking about this, about the traffic and the trucks. And whether or not folks from the downtown area want. To hang out downtown. It seems to me that. Every, that their road is busy all the time, despite the fact that the people, you know, can't hear themselves or hear their neighbors. It's, it seems to me that the evidence suggests that the people. Of the, the residents aren't interested in hanging out downtown. Despite the fact that we have heavy traffic. Is that, do we need any additional evidence that for that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see. More retail. I'd like to see, you know, more than just, you know, a restaurant or two that does really, really well. Yeah, I think more retail and, and I think the media, there's a whole section in here on. Public spaces that we can, that we'll touch on and. Yeah, I mean, there's definitely a few good examples of places that are drawing crowds of people to come and. And, and do what their goods and our services, but. We do more. We do more.
Oh, counselor, pray as your hand up.
I just have a question. It was mentioned here. That what we're doing with the downtown streetscape project won't deter traffic from going through town. Just to clarify, there isn't really a, there's not. A way to work around Philomath, even if, I mean, there isn't an alternative. It is downtown or nowhere else. If you're headed to the west coast on highway 20 and 34, correct? Right? There's no. Back way.
For highway 2034, there is, but you know, before highway 20, they would take highway 22 out from Salem. So when you're talking about large freight that's trying to get over the coast, there's. Highway 22 from Salem over to Lincoln City. There's highway 20 from Corales along with to. Wall Porter. Then you've got 126 from Eugene over to Walport to. Yeah.
I was thinking more local specific, like our local logging traffic isn't going to go up to Salem or down to Eugene to get around Philomath. So the reality is we have that truck traffic. Okay, that's, it's just to clarify, I guess.
Yeah, I think when you have a choice, it's kind of if you're coming from a farther away. You're coming from, you can make a choice, but.
Uh, counselor Kazi.
Thank you. You know, I have a, a couple of broader comments that I would like to throw out. When, when is that I really like this study? I think it nicely ties together a lot of efforts that we've undertaken in the last 18 months. And really helps. Generate a more cohesive effort. I would be interested in hearing from others what they might. Think would give this project the best chance of success going forward. Because I do think there's a lot of wonderful ideas in here. Yes, we do have truck, truck, truck traffic going through town. And yes, I believe we can work with businesses to help them create areas. That can not accommodate that traffic, but can help them thrive even though that traffic is there. And we have two great examples. I mean, Dirt Road uses their side area. Pretty heavily and people like it a lot. And the dizzy hen has tables along the side of their building, you know, we could certainly help businesses. To create those nooks where they can, where people can sit outside if it ever stops raining. And the business can thrive. So I'm, I don't see. The truck traffic, maybe someday there will be a route. Down Chapel and around Philomath, but I think, you know, for the minute future, we need to deal with what we have. My other comment is that based on public input. And on the brownfield studies that are incorporated here, I think the community's highest priority. Are for the town square, for the public. Land that we've acquired. And I think we've heard pretty loud and clear. That people want a town square. I know there are a number of alternatives presented in this study. But. I think that's the one that the community is most interested in and has the greatest need for to have. An additional gathering space.
Thank you. Counselor Bisco.
Um, to counselor Kazi's point of acknowledging that this is kind of the cards that we have to deal with. And I think that most of us have experienced it, or at least visually experienced what's happening on dizzy hen and with dirt brewing. And kind of how that's expanded over the last year or two, just that community engagement and community gathering space. I'm wondering if we don't look to, so back to page six is the urban framework plan once again, and you'll see that area of the potential pedestrian passageways. Do we look to encourage, however that encouragement occurs? More community opportunity for outdoor seating in that those alleyways behind our main street businesses. So it may be as visible, but you'd certainly would be buffered from that truck traffic. It would allow that expansion a little bit into that. Walking pedestrian kind of experience. And if the goal is to encourage further small business development on Main Street. Really capturing a continuation of businesses that. Are community oriented. So we have our service based businesses that, you know, tourists are probably likely to stop. At as. Not that they wouldn't, but they aren't as likely to stop for a car part as they are for an ice cream shop or, you know, a great burger or a brewery or whatever that might be. It's a little bit different purpose. Can we start with that dirt road brewing dizzy hen corner and just start looking very focused in that space and allow it to organically grow from there? We have a great start already, just utilizing the spaces that we have and leaning the conversations that direction.
That's a really good point, Counselor Bisco. And part of this is. There's a struggle here in that the city doesn't own all but one of these lots, right? And so. Here's this plan of all these great things that could happen on other people's property. And so the question really becomes what can the city council do to help entice or incentivize? Property owners to kind of go down and kind of look at this. So having the plan, kind of a, a larger helps with that. But there's, you know, there's some recommendations in here for actual financial incentives to help people with facade improvements, to help people. You know, redevelop a, a property or maybe a, a building that's fallen into disrepair or isn't as usable as it was before. To, you know, put some funds there to actually help them. So. You know, what's really going to come down to is short of having a plan and saying, here, property owners, here's a plan that we really, really like. We hope you do too. The city really should look at, if we're serious about some of these ideas. Prioritizing that and then looking at what kind of financial incentive we're going to give to property owners in order to help with that. Maybe presenting a plan is enough, but it may not be. It may be actual financial incentives to make some of those things happen. And if it's a matter of changing the zoning or changing allowed uses or, you know, changes on those things. Those are things we do that don't necessarily cost us any money, right? We just need to identify them and make those changes. But some of them are going to require some incentives to make those happen. From counselor.
Counselor Nielsen has her hand up as well. Counselor Nielsen.
Oh. I was just gonna say, on a personal note, I'm really interested in that open space in front of the museum. We talked about needing a, a gathering place, a, a public where we can utilize and gather together and, and build community. That's another beautiful spot right there. In front of the museum. That's, oh, I don't know how available that is for us, but. To be able to utilize that more fully than just an open grass field would be great to bring people. In nature, we love being outdoors and, and whether it's good or. Not a place where people can gather and families can, can gather and enjoy, enjoy the beauty of Philomath. I think that would be something important.
Thank you. And counselor Lena.
Yeah, it was. To kind of follow on to what Chris was talking about, the. Info in our meeting packet about the enterprise zone designation. Is an interesting topic to bring up, but it seems to. Rule out 90% of the enterprises that were, seem like we're trying to encourage in the downtown area. Because retail, restaurants, bars, those kind of things are not. Are not encouraged or allowed to participate in the, in the zone. And so I'm wondering if there is a corresponding type of zoning and tax. Preference that we can provide to people to encourage them to develop in those infill projects in the downtown. With more, you know, retail oriented, like just as an example, if someone wanted to open a small. Grocery store or something like that, right now in the enterprise zone that. That they wouldn't be able to apply for the benefits of that enterprise zone. I'm just wondering if there's. An alternative that we could apply to the specific area that would allow some incentives to be provided.
There are, and I appreciate you bringing up the enterprise zone. The, the enterprise zone is. Is really governed by state law in large part. Because you're cooperating with the other taxing districts in order to give those tax benefits. And so a lot of it's regulated there. But yeah, there's a, if, if it's something that the council wants to pursue and it's a high priority for the council. There's, there's no limit, I shouldn't say that. There, there aren't a lot of restraints on what this is, it can't provide as far as incentives for different businesses to come to downtown Philomath. We can provide grant programs. We can provide no interest loan programs. I mean, there's any number of things that we can do to incentivize. The other side of that is then, you know, typically residents, taxpayers say, well, why are you giving my money to that business? You know, why don't you give me some money for my business? Why are you giving them money for their business? And so you really got to justify the program as this really benefits. The entire Philomath community by having this vital downtown. That's better for everybody, not just that business owner. So it's got to be a program. It's got to be established. It's got to be open to everybody that meets the criteria that you put into there. But we could definitely look at several examples of different programs that are out there to do just what you're talking about. Focus on retail and, you know, products and services, not just on. You know, enterprise zone really focuses on manufacturing, trade and sector type jobs. But we can look at, we can look at some different, different types of incentives for different types of employers.
Thank you, Chris. And Counselor Bisco.
Uh, so coming back to this downtown specific area, I think we all agree that that 13th street corridor on Main Street is, is kind of that hub of center of activity. What I'd like to encourage the council to consider is can we do a targeted outreach of the stakeholders that own the properties there, have the current businesses there? Also to the chamber of commerce, not just a, hey, you put a notice out, we're going to have a meeting, but an actual like a land use process where we're direct mailing to individuals that will be directly impacted by this. The businesses, the church, the museum, you know, maybe going out as far as 14th where Philomath, I think it's community churches. And maybe even that 15th street and bringing all those businesses to a specific. Listening session might be the word. And let's hear what they would like to have happen. Let's hear from them, you know, what? What would you need to make something like this work? Because I think the will is there. I just think that maybe the path isn't there and we're not connecting. Those property owners with this decision making process maybe quite, yeah, we haven't quite made that connection. So is that a next step that we can evaluate and just have that, that first conversation? Is this something even that those property owners and businesses want?
Thank you, Counselor Bisco. And I'm just gonna. We, and I think it's a great idea to further engage with the local businesses and with the chamber as we start to. West this out a little bit. But I also just wanted to throw in a few of the things that I, that jumped out at me that I really liked with the plan. I liked a lot of it. Some of the things that I thought were. Good points to bring up is on the city owned property downtown. Uh, I can't find it. I know it's in here, but uh, on that city owned property, I like that idea kind of. The town square slash commercial business area. There's details that can be worked out there, but I like the concept in general. Kind of a gathering space and that retail. I also really liked the idea of. You know, reconnect that museum space in front of it. Again, I'm with Counselor Nielsen. I don't know. What kind of options the city has with that space, but I like the idea of having something. A better spot for a community gathering space as well. And then I also like. The idea of targeting that 13th street main corridor or corner. I really like the idea of. That timber archway that was mentioned. I also like the idea of community lighting over the streets. I like the idea of the, the kiosk and the, the generally the streetscape project, but. Those are a few of the things that I thought we, that highlighted. And I did want to at least acknowledge that. There's probably some of these short term goals. That associated with the streetscape project that we probably couldn't. that associate with the street case project that we probably couldn't move forward relatively easily without, that probably aren't really that controversial. But again, I think it's important to reach out to the community and find out. But, but there's some great stuff in here. I think that StanTech did a great job. I think the community did a good job. And I really appreciate the process they went through in order to develop it. So just wanted to mention those things. And I saw that Counselor Cosi's hand was up.
Yes, I was just gonna support Counselor Bisco's suggestion and, and suggest that we include all property owners and businesses in this area, even though you're not next door to Dirt Road. You might have a desire and need to expand and maybe need a little help. So why not include everyone in the area? The city-owned property options are on page 92.
And before we jump to page 92, page 47. If we just jump back into, the only thing we skipped over is a little bit of talk on transportation and then a whole section about zoning and different zoning allowances for things. Again, a lot of that's going to come to you filtered through the planning information first. So we won't spend a lot of time there tonight. But Counselor, did you have a quick question?
Just quick, and my mind is still stuck in the road thing. And I don't know if this would work, but or that would have to deal with it too. But is there a way to create a throughway on the, on, I don't know if the street's wide enough in Main Street, but you could have a corridor basically down the middle for those vehicles that want to just go through. They don't want to stop. On either side of that, you have folks that can go slower, can park or do whatever. I don't think there's enough width, but there might, but it's just, it's sort of an out-of-the-box idea, another way to deal with traffic. Get those things through that we don't really want and be able to provide a way for folks to, anyway, just, I just wanted to bring that up. As a thought.
Yeah, I think in highway terms, you've got to call them like a frontage road. So you have your main road and then you have your frontage road just where all your stores and all your access stuff are. It's not really how our downtown is set up currently. I don't want to go back and make that work without taking out more space for business stuff. But I think that, yeah, I mean, the whole premise of, the whole premise of the couplet was to get the vehicle through town quicker, right? And then the whole premise of the streetscape process to get them all through town just a little slower, right? And so there's definitely competing interests on what we're trying to do, but the intent is we want to keep traffic moving through town.
Right. But the folks that don't want to stop just want to get to their destination, there's a way to get them there.
The left lane, maybe it's a, you know, truck traffic, go to the left lane or something like that.
Moving all the apple gate, your Main Street corridor, your pedestrian.
ODOT would not go for that.
ODOT won't go for any of this.
So going to page 47, it, they actually did a brownfield inventory study. Again, I don't want to go into a lot of detail here, but they set up a scoring system where they kind of helped prioritize different brownfield sites. And, you know, brownfield side is essentially underdeveloped for whatever reason. It's a pretty broad definition. It's not like it has environmental contamination, which is what you're taught a brownfield is in high school, right? A brownfield is by state definition, state of Oregon definition, any site that is underdeveloped or underutilized for whatever reason that you can point to is a brownfield in some way or shape or form. And so it's a pretty broad definition. They've gone through and given different point scales and point systems of everything. And then have identified these, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight locations that kind of hit their top list of 3.5 points or higher. And then of those, you know, the city-owned site at 14th and Main is kind of right up there. They've got a few other sites identified, you know, the Pioneer site, which I have some my own opinions on down at what's now the new Flemish Emporium. Again, was not open and operational when the street port was started or midway. I think maybe they were open when this first came out, but at the time that was a vacated gun shop, right? And so obviously pretty low hanging fruit for this plan. So it scored pretty high there. It would probably score less highly now that there's an active business in there. It's done some, some nice redevelopment on that building, nice improvements there. So, you know, look at those sites. And then again, as you go through those, as you would expect, each of those are kind of touched on as you go through. So let's talk just briefly. I'm on page 52. This is sites P43, P44, 1348 Main Street. So this is the city-owned site at 14th and Main. They've got a couple of recommendations here for this site. Enroll the site in the DEQ VCP, which I'm assuming is a voluntary compliance program. That's not right. We have worked with DEQ on this site. We got a grant several years ago to do the phase one, phase two environmental assessment for the site before the city purchased it, which we did. We did not fulfill the purchase at that time that we did that improvement. The buyer backed or the seller backed out on us. Or you could say we didn't pay as much money as I wanted us to, however you look at it. Anyway, the transaction didn't go through. It was several years later after the then-owner had made additional improvements and worked with DEQ for a number of years. The city came back to the table and actually purchased the property. We received all the documentation that the owner had been working on the property. We know that there's underground storage tanks. We know that there's some leakage there. We know that there's contaminated soil. We know there's a hydraulic lift that has some leakage there. We know there was some lead-based paint that's been removed from the property. We know there was asbestos in the roofing material. That's been removed from the property. So we have a pretty good idea of what's there. We don't have the funds or we've not dedicated funds to do the cleanup. I did just get a letter from DEQ within the last two weeks saying, remember this property over here? Remember those issues? We'd like a plan on what you're going to do going forward. All of the DEQ grants that you go to apply for, for that cleanup, the first thing they want to know is what is your reuse plan? What are you going to do with the site, right? Show us your economic develop, economic strategy for making this property more than what it is today, which is a contaminated site. So now that we have that in place and we have this plan, my intent with the council's blessing is to move forward with a DEQ grant for cleanup of that site. We've got the documentation which DEQ have paid for. We've now got a plan in place for, you know, future potential uses of the property. It would probably be good to settle on a future use of the property to include in that paperwork as opposed to here's some plan of some things we could do with the property. So I think we're close to being able to go back to DEQ and respond to the letter and say, we agree wholeheartedly. How about a grant to help us clean this site up and do what it is we want to do with the site? So picture in time, that's where we're at today on this project. I feel pretty confident knowing it's there. I do have some, sort of some of that leakage has leaked out into our right of way, so out into 14th Street. And we've got some utilities out there. And, you know, if we had a water line break or something, the first thing we do is let Kevin, everybody know, hey, there's contaminated soil here, know what you're working with, use protection, et cetera, et cetera. But that would be the extent of like the real danger there, other than it's, you know, it's a leak. So it's in the water. It's filtering its way eventually down to the river and we need to get it cleaned up. Kind of bottom line. So with that property, it would be helpful to have a discussion and, and at least a step forward or plan to go forward. How would the city council like to come to a decision on what to do with this property? Later in this book, and we can go there, there's some specific, I think, three different recommendations on what to do with it. Or we could do something completely different. And I don't know, we need to decide that tonight, but I would like to have a plan in place on how would the council like to arrive at a game plan for 14th and Main. And hopefully that's not leaving it too wide open for everybody. But what are your thoughts?
I was gonna ask if folks wanted to have a future work session about this topic, but Counselor Cosi?
Yes, it might be appropriate. I'd like to perhaps consider the uses here as a starting point and maybe find out if people want to see other options or if they have something else in mind that they want to consider. And just think about what information we might need in order to make a decision as a council. Counselor Bisco has her hand up.
Thank you. I can't really see that. Yeah. Counselor, Counselor Bisco?
I agree with Counselor Cosi's recommendations that we consider what's in the plan, but I'm going to go back to that space. I don't think this, the city-owned property or the town square idea or whatever idea comes out of that really operates in a silo. I think it goes directly to all of the business owners around it that will be impacted by the usage of that kind of core part of this downtown area. And so I'm gonna request again or suggest again that we go back to that space where we are engaging with all property owners in these, I don't know, a two-by-three or three-by-four block area. Making sure that they are specifically invited and allowed to give that feedback and that opportunity to something that is pretty, pretty influential and potentially how their businesses thrive or survive. So the council making any decision outside of that engagement would really be a, the council's decided that we know what's best without asking you what you think you might want there and getting their feedback as well. And I think it's critical that we all move together in this space so that we are in fact building a community in the process of building a community use area.
Great point. Thank you. And Counselor Andrade?
I really appreciate those points, Counselor, Counselors Cosi and Bisco. I fully support learning more from the community about what it is that we would like to have in this space, especially considering the fact that, like, even though we had two meetings and a survey, as was shown on here, there were only 40 some odd people who had answered the survey. And we've had higher survey rate, or response rates for the park advisory board. And then I don't remember how many people attended the second meeting, but I know the first meeting was solely council members except for one spouse of a council member and one person who was just super involved in the, in the city meetings as it is. So I, even though we have heard a lot about people wanting a town square, we don't necessarily know if it should be there or elsewhere. I just still think that we have a lot to learn from our community about what it is that we are prioritizing for that spot.
Ms. Jones, if I can share my screen, I've had to pull up. This is page 92. And it talks specifically about three different options here. Let me get there. Does that come up? Okay, Counselor Andrade, Counselor Lehman? So let me minimize my window. So this first option, option one, really, if you look at the next page, it's the bottom left-hand corner on page 93 is the illustration of this option. And it's looking at a new two or three-level building along Main Street frontage. The ground level would be public restrooms and a visitor center occupying at least one of the tenant spaces there on Main Street. Rear parking lot would include decorative pavers or stamped concrete. So it could be used as community event space during evenings and weekends. This option provide additional commercial services along Main Street, provide visitors accommodations and provide for additional event space. Option addresses and balances most of the public sentiments expressed through the planning process. Don't you read out those stairs to pick it in figure 6.6.3 or two in the bottom, bottom left-hand corner of page 93. The other option, I won't read this whole thing, but it's the public plaza and visitor center. So this would be like option A, but without that commercial building along Main Street. So it would be focused on the plaza. You would still have maybe a kiosk of some sort, public restrooms that would be open. So you would use it really just for that meeting space, the event space area, but not have the commercial development along Main Street. The third option here is the redevelopment block. It's really, let's not make a decision now. It's kind of more, we've heard tonight already, it's let's reengage with the property owners on the entire block. So that would be Pioneer to the west and to the south and to the southwest. I mean, that's the rest of the block is the Pioneer facility. So it would be engaging with Pioneer and seeing if we could come up with what could be done. There's along Main Street, excuse me, Pioneer along Main Street, there's acupuncture. And then there's the smaller, I guess, strip mall, for lack of a better word, that's got, I think, three or four different businesses and then our, at least potential for three or four businesses in there. So you do have Pioneer plus these two other property owners. So it'd be an engagement with them specifically, say, how do we, excuse me, how do we best utilize this entire block? And what that would look like. And so no real recommendations other than just, do we look at this more than just the city-owned site and look at it more in a big picture, which obviously has some benefits to it? And maybe some disadvantages as well, that you're bringing more people to the table. It's going to delay decision-making and, and, you know, potentially come up with a lot of different voices at the table. So, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. It just takes longer for everything, right? So those are the kind of the three options that StanTech presented based on what they'd heard from everybody. Does anybody have any strong feelings one towards another? Again, we've already heard on kind of reaching out to those appropriate business owners or property owners along there. Which I think is a great idea. At the same time, I would hate to think that what we do on our properties can be dictated by a business, you know, one business owner in town or two business owners in town. For example, if we're hearing from the community, that's where they want a community plaza. The business owners may say, no, I don't want a plaza here. I want other businesses here, right? I don't want the plazas here. Well, are we going to let them dictate what that becomes? Because they're the property owners that are adjacent? Are we going to listen to the community as a whole? But yeah, nobody's saying ignore the community as a whole. I'm just saying, I think the business owners adjacent are a stakeholder, but I don't think they're the only stakeholders that we should be engaging with when we determine what to do with that site. I'm much more interested in what the collective would like to do with that site than individual property owners.
And I, and I was just gonna add that, you know, on the next page as well, 94, there's also the idea of, you know, having it available as an interim use spaces for like temporary businesses. So there's kind of an impression as well. But, um.
I think I see Counselor Cosi's hand up.
Counselor Bisco was first.
It's true. Go ahead. I'm just curious. First, I don't know that anybody's here suggesting we just take, I, I think it's important we take that collective of opinions and ideas and that's part of that engagement and that both public and property owner engagement here. I'm looking at a diagram that's, we put some time into for this proposal on the bottom of page 93. I know that at both of the meetings that we held and even going all the way back to some of the downtown streetscapes planning or concept discussions, was that idea of that town square park space possibility for farmer's market? Was there anything in this plan that's not in this document? That was kind of a draft idea or a proposal? Like this is laid out very specifically? Did we see layouts that were comparable for that town square? Not to this design, but one that was more towards that community space, that park space, potential farmer's market space? Or is this the only conceptual drawing that we have?
So I don't want to speak for StanTech, but I think this was option one as opposed to option A because I think this is kind of their preferred, as they say, this is kind of, this was a balance between the public sentiment that they got. So this was a balance between commercial activity along Main Street, which we want to encourage, right? This is, this is one of those lots, early 14th and Main. This is like the gateway coming into this, the city, and you've got good frontage of the businesses across the street. They're all right up against the back of the curb there. And so I think the idea was to try to mirror that on this side of the road. The acupuncture place is there, Pioneer's right there. So I think the idea was if you have commercial frontage along Main Street, that's going to extend that out. And then if you're coming in town, you've got that feel of downtown on both sides of the street as you're coming into 14th Street. So you get that, but then obviously the sentiment was some type of gathering space. And so you do that along the backside with some overflow parking. So it was really trying to find that balance, which was their primary option. The second option would be scrap the building, just go with the plaza, because we heard that from the community. And step three would be again, looking at it more holistically. You know, Pioneer, a lot of the lot directly south of the city-owned lot is, is utilized for parking, you know? Pioneer has their employees parked there. Well, if they're Pioneer, if their employees aren't parking there on Friday nights and Saturdays and Sundays, you know, maybe there is a partnership there that could be redeveloped as one large area that could be used during the week by Pioneer and utilized by event-type stuff. Insurance and liability process to work through. But, you know, maybe that's something that could be done without having to move buildings and move fences or any of that type of stuff. It's just a matter of relabeling how property is used. So again, I think there's some low-hanging fruit that may be pretty easy to engage with Pioneer and the other business owners there. Part of the discussion in here talks about is downtown the best location for Pioneer to be, right? It's not necessarily very heavy and pedestrian traffic needs. It's a big footprint for the downtown area and there's Uh, needs. Uh, it's a big footprint for the downtown area and there's very little walk-in traffic, very little commerce going on as far as. Through in and out of the door. Um, but it's been a staple and following for a long, long time, right? So who'd be it for me or anybody else to say Pioneer? We'd like you to leave downtown. It's the last thing I would tell Pioneer, right? But the fact is from a land use standpoint, yeah, there's not a lot going on there other than a lot of employees are there and working out of there. And, and it's a kind of a corporate hub. Um, but this just makes a note that. Big picture, what if Pioneer were to relocate and not be in the downtown core? Is that better for the downtown core or not? So. Everything from small fruit, low hanging fruit to these big, kind of big audacious ideas of, oh, what if?
Great. And uh. Counselor Kazi.
Thank you. You're so tiny. I'm surprised you couldn't see me. Uh, let's see. I think I do recall um, in the streetscape's material, there was a diagram of an open square. And I think it did have like a clock tower in it, but it was, it was very attractive and. And I liked, I guess, um. And I think I've heard people talk about. Pioneer perhaps not being the best place, best business, best use of downtown. Um, personally, I think that's utterly ridiculous. I think they've been a good partner to the community. And I go to the gym every day and watch people go back and forth from Pioneer, you know? They go there all the time. So I, I think of it as more of a permanent fixture to the downtown unless they really want to move and they want to go somewhere else. Then that's a different conversation, but. I would think it would be beneficial for them to have. The town square nearby to have a place where employees could go and sit and eat their lunch if they want to, if it's not raining. Um, and have the alleyway improved and be more attractive there. Um, and uh. As Catherine was describing earlier, to attract people using those alleyways as. As pedestrian pass pathways as well. I was in Salem this weekend and they are revitalizing a lot of their downtown and are using alleyways. Um, as, as pass throughs and even have businesses opening on to the alleyway. So. Um, I think it really is um, an idea worth considering.
Thank you. And I'll just add that, uh, there's always the possibility that Pioneer could be a good partner. We could call Pioneer Square.
Someone else has used it though.
Uh, and Councilman Lehman.
Yeah, well, I kind of want to change the focus before we have to close this down. Just wanted to bring up a point. So if everybody wants to stay on this topic, I can circle back before we close down.
Counselor, are you on the same topic?
Well, and it ties into the Brownfields uh, condition. So it was a slight move off of that. Uh, so the question is, uh, kind of Chris to clarify, he said that it's brownfield, we can apply for a grant, but we have to have a plan of use. Does this report specific enough? Do we have to zero in on a specific item to start applying for that grant?
I don't know. I don't know. I would, I would give them the entire plan and say, here's the plan that we work with Stan Tech to develop. See how far that gets us. I, I don't know how specific that needs to be. I've not looked into that EPA grant that closely.
Uh, I'm just thinking it would be good to move ahead with that grant and get this thing cleaned up and then. As long, and then we can come up with the more specific is, has been suggested.
And plans change, so having a plan that you can say at, at the time we apply for the grant. This is what our thought is. That's helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, yeah, specifically with the square footage of the property is, do you know?
I could look. Uh, maybe while Counselor Lehman's speaking, I can look.
Until later.
Yeah. So I, I saw on page sixty-five of the report, there was a, a chart that they put together about retail conditions. And basically estimating. Or noting the different types of services and amenities that people have to leave town for. And the two notable exceptions are beer, wine and liquor stores and gas stations. People don't have to leave town for those. But almost everything else that's listed on here. Um. People need to leave town for. And like professional services aren't even included in this. This is just retail, like. Doctors, lawyers, accountants, blah, 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 that stuff. So I'm wondering when we're looking at trying to kind of infill the downtown. Should we be concentrating on? Retail and professional services that will allow more people to stay in town rather than going out of town? Or are we really looking at more how to keep the people that are passing through town in town? For longer? Does that, does that make sense what I'm saying? So. Populations along the thirty-four, twenty, highway twenty, thirty-four corridor are just going to go up over the next. Five or 10 years, creating more congestion, particularly on the back routes. To get out of town and basically to go east. Um, and so just wondering, given the focus of, on the state level of. Reducing carbon emissions and stopping vehicular traffic to the highest extent possible. If we should be more focused on. Infilling the downtown with services that people in Flemish need and can currently get here. Rather than just on, you know, opening another wine shop or another brew pub.
Do you? At this point in time, it seems that uh, we're just trying to encourage economic development, but the businesses. For the most part, the businesses that choose to come, we're kind of leaving it a chance, right?
Yeah, I was wondering if that's the, if that's the approach we want to take, you know, let's wipe the slate clean and see what lands there or do we want to? Try and put some emphasis on those services and professional services that currently are supported in our community.
Yeah, Chris, are you familiar with what options exist for us to help targets or type of businesses? I know we've talked about.
Yeah, well, based on that graph, it seems like the only thing we wouldn't want to target would be breweries and wineries and gas stations and. Everything else is wide open, right? So I don't know that that would be a focus other than. I, I, you know, I don't think we'd go after additional breweries or gas stations. Anything else that we could be more welcoming or more accommodating. I think that that's what we're trying to do. So. But I, I think Counselor Lehman's point, I'm not trying to be facetious. I think Counselor Lehman's point is. How targeted do we want to be? And, and yeah, I think by. I think that's maybe more of a land use question on allowed uses in the C one, if we're going to allow for. Professional office space and those types of things. That's going to encourage that type of development. When we start looking at some type of incentive program, that could cater it even more. So yes, we, we could. Very specifically cater towards professional services, for example.
So, so I guess my point is if we decide to do that. And those spaces get infilled with, you know, a doctor's office, just as an example, or a dentist or. Even senior living environment, something like that, that's not conducive to tourism and or. Gathering bunch of people in the downtown area to sit and chit chat while you're waiting to go to the dentist, you know, that. That's just not, the, the two don't seem compatible, I guess, is my point.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of space there. So I, I. I'm not overly concerned about an abundance of doctor, officer, dentists overwhelming everything. I think. I think you set the table for a little bit of everything. Your zoning allows for everything. And I think the market's going to dictate. Who comes where. I mean, we can only support so many dentists and orthodontists in town, right? So I, I think the market's going to bear. Who's going to make a profit and be able to be sustainable in town or not. But it's a good, it's a good thought as we're getting into how and what we're going to incentivize. I guess it's. It's probably a good time to think about that a little bit more clearly. Cause there are two different uses and two different efforts.
I was making note of the time, it's ten till seven and it'd be nice to have a little bit of a break in between. So uh, but first we'll have Counselor Kazi and then we'll start to wrap this up.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, I know everyone's aware of this, but I think the public's primary interest is for a full service grocery store. Um, which is also something that I think tourists passing through town would make use of as well. It's always something you forget. So I'm not sure where that would fall in this project. I mean, something that would take enough. Space to put a grocery store in would be pretty significant. And as Counselor Lightman pointed out. Um, that would not be eligible for the enterprise zone, but we can certainly target. Incentives to try and attract a grocery store.
Yeah, grocery stores aren't typically found in your downtown corridors that are pedestrian centric. They tend to be very car centric. So you typically are going to find those outside of your downtown corridor, southern, if you're talking about very heavy metropolitan areas where you got skyscrapers and a lot of people on top of each other. You use five sets, but typically those grocery stores are going to be on those outskirts of your commercial districts, not in the downtown core. So you wouldn't necessarily. Incentivize that in your downtown area where space is limited. Um, to answer your earlier question, point four, two acres, about eighteen thousand, three hundred square feet between the two city owned blocks.
Thank you. And there are, there's still plenty of other space available outside of this, what we refer to as downtown core that would still be very appropriate for a grocery. But I, I, I agree though, grocery. Is of very high importance. Definitely one of my reasons as well. Um, Chris, do you feel like you have the information that you need around the council at this point?
No, I think it was good to have this conversation and to get the background, but um. No, these were good discussions. You know, it's a lot of document. We got more than halfway through it, about halfway through the, the important stuff. So. Um, we do have this on the agenda for the planning commission for next Monday. We want to go over maybe even just this level of detail with them a little bit, get them up to speed. Uh, maybe go a little bit further because we won't have so much discussion with some of these, but. You know, the fun stuff is, is the next part that we didn't really get to. I guess I would just leave it tonight. I don't know. I need any necessary guidance. There's nothing time sensitive here other than this idea that. We're going to have a contractor here for twenty months. Boy, if we could do a project or two while they're here and save some money, it seems like a great opportunistic time to do it. But short of that, they're not a real time crunch here. I guess I would just leave it, um, as you continue to go through this document. Um. One of the things that I've been grappling with, and so I'll just extend that to all of you is. We know how big Flemish is today. We know how big we're anticipated to get population wise. As I look at other communities and, and communities that I look to as doing things right. I think we want to be careful to not um. To not dilute our public meeting spaces too much. And our public gathered areas too much. And our retail areas too much. I mean, I think that having a downtown core as an example. You know, the downtown core from eleventh to fifteenth, you say, well, that's kind of limiting. Why don't you just go from seventh to twenty-sixth? Well, then you spread everything out and who's going to walk from sixteenth down to, you know, so. That makes sense to kind of pull that in together. And I think when we talk about our. Community gathering spaces, that same thing holds true. You know, we're only so big. We had a great event on Thirteenth Street. I could imagine that space with another two hundred people there and still feeling pretty comfortable. Maybe another three hundred people there. Now you're talking about another two thousand people there. Now it gets a little uncomfortable where everybody's kind of tight. But how many times do we have an event that we're going to have two thousand people in the downtown, right? Even with a community of five thousand people or even a community of eight thousand people, are we going to have? Half of those people show up to one event? Not likely, right? So how much community gathering space do we need, right? Is Thirteenth Street? The community gathering space or is it someplace else? Is it in front of the mall? And I guess my last question, does it need to be everything, right? Do we need to have? A space in front of the museum, a space on Thirteenth Street, a space on Fourteenth and Main, a space behind city council and the police department? That seems like a lot of community gathering spaces, which maybe it's short sighted to say that's too much. But maybe that's realistic and knowing where you are and where your values are. So. It may not be which of these do we like? It may be which of these is going to best serve the needs of the community? And which of these areas could be better utilized for a different purpose, right? So I guess with that, just enjoy reading through it. I hope you've had time to go through all of this. Um, we'll probably look in the future to come back and grapple with this a little bit more. Um, if you've got individual feedback for me. Um, I'd love to sit down and talk with you individually on this. Um, I, I think Stan Tech did a great job on this. Several other recommendations I don't care for, but there's a lot in here. I think that's really good, that would really help the city. Progress in our revitalization of the downtown area. Um, so thank you for your time tonight. And with that, we should probably conclude and take a few minutes before we get into city council, man. Turn back to you.
Agreeing, yeah. Um, so we're going to adjourn for the evening, but yeah, please do pass along to Stan Tech that. Um, I thought they did a great job and really appreciate the work they put into it. Thank you. And with that word, John.